I'm William Holtz with Lake TV and I'm excited to welcome you to a very important night of local forums right here on Lake TV presented by Serdike Yamaha, providing year-round fun at the Lake of the Ozarks for more than 50 years. Now, a big shout out to the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce for collaborating with us on tonight's forum. As much as we all complain and let our opinion be known on national politics, it should go without saying that our local elected officials are the ones that affect us directly the most. Tonight's forum will include candidates for the city of Lake Ozark, both the mayor and board of aldermen positions, along with aldermen for Osage Beach, and finally, the School of the Osage School Board. With that being said, we applaud you for tuning in and getting involved. Tonight's forum wouldn't be possible without the generosity of our sponsors. Tonight's broadcast on Lake TV is presented by Serdike Yamaha, the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, and Lake TV. Now, sit back and get ready for a great night of getting to know the candidates. At this point, I'm honored to turn it over to our moderator for tonight broadcasting live from School of the Osage Fieldhouse, Luke Hagedorn.
Thank you, Will. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our 2023 Meet the Candidates Forum for the School of Osage Board of Education. This election will be held on Tuesday, April 4th. This joint forum is the result of a collaborative effort by the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce and is presented by Lake TV. Six candidates have filed for three seats with three-year terms. We are pleased to have all six candidates joining us this evening, or will have. Starting at this end of the table, I'd like to introduce Carrie Anderson, Joyce Bush, Kelly Frisella, Allison Snyder, and Ethan Shackelford. Todd Miller will be joining us shortly. On behalf of Lake TV and all the voters in the School of the Osage District, we thank you for your attendance and your participation. School Board members are the only elected officials within an individual school district, and it's important for the public to hear from you directly before going to the polls on April 4th. Before we get started, we do have a few ground rules to cover. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes for opening and closing comments, with one minute to respond to each selected question. We have a timekeeper and a clock up front. Once the question is completed and the response begins, that's when the clock will start. Please be aware of your time, or I will be obliged to make you aware of that time. If there are no questions or concern, we're going to go ahead and start with our opening comments. Again, each candidate will have two minutes. Determined by a random draw, our first speaker will be Allison Snyder.
Am I just introducing myself? Okay. My name is Allison Snyder, and I've been on the school board twice since 2000. I was first elected in 2000, and I was elected to four terms. I retired in 2012, and then again in 2013. Then I came back on in 2016, and I've stayed on until now. During that time, we've accomplished a great deal of things in School of the Osage. We've built a number of buildings, we've added a few things on, and we've upgraded our security, we've, I don't know, we've added everything, we've changed our curriculum, we've updated our tech capabilities, we've just done everything to bring everybody into the future. Me personally, I've grown up here, I'm a Lake Area native, I am a graduate of School of the Osage. My husband and I have been here for 40 years, and we have two children who are both Osage graduates. And I don't know, I've enjoyed my time here on the board, and I want to continue to serve the school, district, and the students, and just help to carry them forward into the future.
With a two-minute opening statement is Carrie Anderson.
Thank you, Luke, Chamber in Lake TV. My name is Carrie Anderson, and with the support of family, friends, staff, and teachers, I'm excited to run for School of the Osage School Board. Our family moved to the Lake Area in 2017, and our three children are thriving at School of the Osage. Alex and Aiden both attend Osage High School, and Abby attends Osage Upper Elementary. My husband Jeremy and I have been active in the community and have been married for 20 years. Since moving to the Lake Area, I've been present and active within the schools as a volunteer and Osage Family Partnership Board member. This year, I'm the president at the Upper Elementary. I enjoy spending time in the schools and with the students. I've been involved in planning multiple fundraisers. Our next fundraiser actually is coming up next Saturday, April 1st. It's at the high school, and all are welcome to attend. I've headed up programs for student development and health, volunteered in the classrooms, served on committees, mentored high school students, ultimately have advocated for all students at School of the Osage. I work at Arrowhead Senior Living Center as an evaluating physical therapist, and I also supervise physical therapy assistants. I believe becoming a school board member is the next step for me in order to serve the district as a whole. I am able to listen to multiple perspectives with integrity and respect. I value collaboration and gather all the information before making a decision. I value family and community. I look forward to continuing to ensure the best possible outcomes for not only my three children, but all students at School of the Osage. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Carrie. Our next candidate with a two-minute opening statement will be Mr. Ethan Shackelford.
Thank you, Luke. I grew up in Stover, Missouri. I graduated high school in 2008, graduated Rala in 2012, where I went on to perform engineering work for a global trash company. I met my wife in 2010, we got married in 2013, and have four kids together, all four attend Osage. Aiden is junior, Cameron is in third grade, Holden is kindergarten, and Devin is early childhood. I look forward to the opportunity to hopefully serve on the school board, to help keep Osage moving forward, and give the students a great education going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Our next candidate with a two-minute opening statement will be Joyce Bush.
Hi, my name is Joyce Bush. I moved to the Lake Area about 25 years ago. I began in the Camneton area. About 10 years ago, I moved to Miller County. I started attending school board meetings about a year and a half ago, and it just seems like I've been sitting there watching everything go on, and I just feel like it's time for me to get more involved. I am a parent and a grandparent. I have a child in the upper elementary, and then I have three grandchildren that also attend the district. One in the middle school, almost high school, and then one in Head Heritage and a grandchild at the upper elementary as well. I currently work in the legislature. I've been there, this is my 15th session, and I think that I'm going to be able to use some of my experience there. I've been working behind the scenes as a legislative assistant, but haven't seen how things roll in parts of government. I know school board's nothing like the legislature, it's a totally different scale, but I do plan to use some of the skills that I've developed working in the legislature to come with me to the school board if you all elect me. And I just, I look forward to serving in this capacity. Like I said, I've been attending the meetings for a year and a half, and I think it's just a natural progression to want to become more involved.
Thank you, Joyce. Our next candidate with a two-minute opening statement is Kelly Frisella.
Thank you, Luke, and thank you to Lake TV for having us this evening. I will just say to all the candidates, I think everybody would agree that it's rather nerve-wracking to be up here and see your face on camera, so I just wanted to say to everyone, good luck this evening, and I think that it says a lot about all of us up here that we're willing to contribute and give back to the community and kind of put ourselves out there with this debate here. So, I'm Kelly Frisella. I am a mom of two boys, so my boys are eight and nine. My youngest, he is in the second grade at Heritage, and that's one of the reasons why I felt compelled to run for school board, was because with my children being so young, we have many, many years ahead of us here at Osage, and you know, definitely have a vested interest for the long haul to making sure that the district continues to thrive and do great things. So, that's my main reason for running. My husband and I, my husband Scott and I, we've been married for almost 12 years. He's been a Lake Area resident since 2002. I moved here shortly after we married in 2012. I had a practice, a private practice. I'm an optometrist. So, I grew up in Southern Illinois and sold that business, and then moved here, and I now work for a tech company. I work from home, and the tech company that I work for, we sell software to the eye care industry. So, one of the reasons why, like I said, I'm running not just for my kids, but I also think that it's important that as a community member, we are involved, and that as stakeholders, we pay close attention to what's going on with all of our municipalities, but school in particular, because for our children, that's really, they're going to be our future, and that's what we are going to be employing them. For those of you out there that own businesses, and for parents, we of course want to make sure that our kids can put their best foot forward when they graduate, and I would just like to participate and be a part of the decision-making process that the school board brings to the table to help facilitate great kids.
Thank you, Kelly. Our final speaker with an opening statement, Mr. Art Todd Miller.
Okay, thank you very much, Luke. My name's Todd Miller. I am a graduate of School of the Osage. I grew up here, and I've spent most of my adult life here. My wife Amy is a teacher here in the district at the Early Childhood Center. I have three daughters. One graduated from School of the Osage in 2018. Another one is a junior right now, and the other one is in sixth grade. So, I still have my children in the school district. I joined the school board back in 2014. At that time, of course, all three daughters were in school. I felt the need to get involved and to help make this district the best it can be. And one of the things I ran on back then was to try to get one-to-one technology into the school, which we've done, and these, of course, are tools that we use, and also other things such as facilities and other tools to help us excel as a school district. More about me, I spent most of my career as both a consultant and a public servant, as a professional engineer and a registered land surveyor. I also graduated from Rala. I am a professional engineer and land surveyor. I'm also an elder at my local church, which I've attended since I was an infant. It's Lake Ozark Christian Church. I'm very, very engaged in the community and really wish that we can do everything we can to make the school district the best it can be. And we'll talk about that a little bit later, but one of the other things that I'd like to see moving forward as a school board member, if I'm elected, is to take the tools and the facilities and everything that we put together and provide the best teaching experience that we can for our kids. So, really, we've put together some tools and facilities for our educators, and we really, really want to move forward and really make this the best educational experience our students can have. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. We put a call out to the community for pertinent questions regarding this particular election. We had a great number of questions submitted, and had to make some tough choices to pare it down in the interest of time. Candidates, we each have one minute to respond. We will rotate the speaking order each time. We'll start down here with Carrie, work our way down, and rotate it as we move along. So, the first question for Carrie, and I can repeat these questions as we get down the line as many times as you'd like. Question number one, what is your vision for education in our community? How does it support the economy and quality of life for the people who live here?
I believe that we need to continue to support our schools, our teachers. I've been in speaking with multiple principals, teachers, staff, getting to know them, getting to know what the issues are, and being clear about what needs to stay in place and what we can do in the future to improve our schools for our children, and to make sure that we can keep them competitive when they graduate. The second part of your question had to do with making sure that we are fiscally responsible with our budget, maintaining a healthy budget, but also making sure that we are continuing to support our teachers and staff, and making sure that they're compensated in a way that maintains our staff and our schools to serve our students. Ultimately, that's our number one priority of what we're all here for.
Thank you. Joyce, what is your vision for education in our community? How does it support the economy and the quality of life for the people who live here?
Well, how to support a quality education in the community? Continue to support our teachers. We've got a great faculty. I mean, we have probably some of the best faculty, and we want to keep them. We want to keep them. First of all, we need to make sure that we are compensating them properly, which we are. I mean, we're doing a very good job of that at this time, but we need to stay on that. We also need to make sure that they have the resources that they need to teach our children. I think another thing that they need some support, they need support when it comes to discipline. They need to know that they don't have to have trouble in the classroom. One of the issues I do understand is when there's sometimes a lack of support as far as what to do when it comes to discipline, and I just feel like we could give a little bit of extra help there in the discipline realm. As far as the technology and stuff like that, I mean, in community, I think we're in a good place right now, and I think we just need to continue to do the things that we're doing as far as that goes.
Thank you very much. Kelly, what is your vision for education in our community? How does it support the economy and the quality of life for the people who live here?
So, one of the things that I think is really, really important moving forward is that we are turning out students that are independent thinkers. So, you know, for me, I view education and one of the responsibilities of the school district to be, we need to be teaching our students, we need to show them and teach them how to think, not necessarily be teaching them what they should be thinking. So, I think that it's incredibly important that we, you know, we power down heavy with academic principles. Reading literacy, I would like to see our reading literacy improve. The national statistics are a bit disturbing that we have 60% of America's fourth graders are not reading at a proficient level. So, I think it's really important that we perpetuate, you know, good math skills, good reading skills, and I really want to see teachers, you know, being able and put in the position to teach where they're at the forefront of the classroom, and they're really the key person or the key to the students and what they're learning.
Thank you very much. Todd, what is your vision for education in our community? How does it support the economy and the quality of life for the people who live here?
Well, Luke, our mission is to prepare our students for a lifetime of success, but I offer something else to that, not just prepare them for a lifetime of success, but to inspire them to excel in their life and everything they do. And one thing, if you have a school district that excels and turns out fantastic students, that also helps your community become a destination. This community is a destination for a lot of reasons. The wonderful Lake of the Ozarks, we're a great tourism destination. There's a lot of things going for this community, and right now, the school districts are fantastic for the school district, but we have challenges that we're seeing in the near future. And to make this a destination school, a school that people want to move here because of not just the lake, not just the entertainment, but also because of the fantastic school district that we have, and make it even better than it is today. And that involves improving everything, resources, facilities, tools. Prepare our students and prepare our educators to help our students excel, and also inspire them, inspire them to live their lives as best they can. So, that's really my vision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Allison, what is your vision for education in our community? How does it support the economy and the quality of life for the people who live here?
Our district vision really pretty much says it all. It's raising excellence the Osage way. And the Osage way is that no matter where we are, what we're doing, we can always do better. We can always look for something better, we can always try to make it better for the kids. For the past few years, it's been really challenging. We've had so much outside noise trying to confuse us and trying to distract us from what our vision is, and we just try really hard to keep the school normal and keep moving forward in a way, excuse me, in a pathway that we can continue focusing on creating the safe, secure learning environments and supporting the staff as we need to. So, in that process, we strive to ensure the students perform at their highest levels that we can provide. And along with that, there's trying to find a strong cohesive no-nonsense curriculum, which we already got in place. We've got a five-year, excuse me, a three-year plan that we have in place that goes through the next three years, and it covers everything, starting from the base level of the little kids with reading, writing, arithmetic, and then it moves up and gets strategically harder as they go along. What we're trying to do is provide our seniors with a graduating effort of being strong citizens that can run the country and the community.
Thank you very much. Next up is Ethan. What is your vision for education in our community? How does it support the economy and the quality of life for the people who live here?
Well, it was said earlier that, you know, the kids are the future, not just out of our school, but other schools in the area and across the country. The vision for Osage to be as good as it can be, the top in the state, we need to stick to the strong core curriculum that's there. Personally, from the engineering company that we have here, you know, we want students to come back. They get their education at Osage, they can go to a school for science and technology, for nursing, for whatever their path may be. We need to prepare them for that and invite them to come back to this area to continue the growth that's here.
Very good. Moving on to the next question, this next one has a little bit of a wordy setup, but the question itself's pretty straightforward. According to the Missouri Constitution, Article 4, Section 2A, "The supervision of instruction in the public schools shall be vested in the State Board of Education." This provision gives the State Board of Education general authority for public education within limits set by the General Assembly. How do you view the relationship between the local district and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and how should that relationship look in the future? Joyce?
Well, I would be first on this one. The State Board of Education has more power than I would like them to have, and I think that the legislature is currently working on maybe tying to scale some of that back and give the districts a little bit more local control. The local districts know best what needs to be done within their community. They know their communities, they know what's going on in their communities. The State Board of Education is the largest employer, one of the largest, if not the largest, state employer, and employing, their budget is astronomical as far as the, not just, not the State Board, but DESI. The State Board of Education, they, I just really want to see more local and less driven from them. I think that they're out of touch a lot of times, they have not been in the classroom. You look at some of the members of the State Board of Education, someone's been on there so long, they should have rotated off, they haven't been reassigned or haven't been given a new, or haven't been replaced, and I think that it's time for definitely some new blood there as well.
Thank you very much. Kelly, I can skip the setup part, but just get straight to the question. How do you view the current relationship between the local district and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and how should that relationship look in the future?
I'm a big proponent, a big proponent for local control, and I think that, you know, I would like to see us be able to remove some of the red tape, and I think it muddies the waters oftentimes, the restrictions and policies and protocols that DESI, you know, has in place with the local district. So, you know, for me, again, I think local control and giving us the freedom to determine, you know, what's going to serve our students best by talking to our teachers. That's the other thing too, that I find is that so often, there's, you know, our teachers are exhausted and overworked, but a lot of, you know, so often, when you talk to a teacher, it's not because of them doing teaching in the classroom, it's from all the extra things, and it's from all the other additional requirements that often stem from these outside organizations. So, you know, in an ideal situation, I would like, again, to see that, you know, we can kind of detach ourselves from some of that and see that the kind of control goes back here locally, where the board and the board can decide in conversation with the teachers and administration.
Thank you very much, Todd. How do you view the current relationship between the local district and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and how should that relationship look in the future?
Okay, thank you, Luke. You know, I think we can all agree that we're running for school board. We really feel like local control is really the direction we should go, but, you know, and also I extend that out to both state and federal mandates as well. But, you know, I want to kind of take a step back. The, at the state level, I've seen a lot of the different school districts around the state, and there's a broad range of ideologies and beliefs between school districts. So, really, to try to have some blanket cover of everything, really, typically does not work. So, from that aspect, I understand the challenges that, at the state level that they deal with, but the best way to solve that is to let the districts handle it at the local level and give us the freedom at the local level to handle it.
Thank you. Allison, how do you view the current relationship between the local district and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and how should that relationship look in the future?
I do think there's a bit of a disconnect between DESI and the local districts, but I also think that we need to stay competitive within the nation and the world, and in order to do that, there needs to be some continuity between schools. If we're competitive with other schools, when the kids go to college and other organizations and go competing for jobs, they need to be competing against people on a level playing field, and that means that we pretty much need the same level, sorry, level area of education to base on. So, with that base, that needs to come from one federal level or state level, because we need to know where we're all going from. On top of that, we can, should be able to add whatever we want. We need to be able to teach whatever subject matters we want, but there needs to be a base there that needs to be level. There's just a lot of DESI involvement that could be probably scaled back quite a bit.
Thank you very much. Ethan, how do you view the current relationship between the local district and the Department of Secondary Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, and how should that relationship look in the future?
And I think for the school to be the best that they can be, that direction needs to be derived from the school board in coordination with administration and teachers on how Osage can excel in the future. It's okay that DESI has some general guidelines, but again, I think for our district to be the best, we need to be able to coordinate that and set that up for our faculty and staff to be able to teach our kids to be the best.
And finally, Carrie. How do you view the current relationship between the local school board and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and how should that relationship look in the future?
I'm proud of our school district and what we offer to our students. I'm proud of our high rankings. We keep local, if we can keep the local control, I think we're, it's going to be better off for our teachers and students. So, we know what our students need. I'm in the schools, we can identify those needs, and they're different needs than in different parts of the state and in different parts of the United States. So, I think we need to keep local control and fight for the things to keep the school district, keep us great, and keep our students successful, and continue our high rankings. So, I would fight to keep local control.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our next question, we'll start out with Kelly on this one. What specific plans, projects, or programs would you recommend to support and improve and improve the School of the Osage? Are there any that you might want to see limited or eliminated?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, one of the things that's really important to me, and probably because we're in the thick of this at home right now with our kids, is making sure that they're fluent readers. So, I would like to, one of the things is just to ensure that we're using reading curriculums that are phonics-based for our small children, and something that's science-backed too. So, there's really actually a thing called the Science of Reading, and there's a lot of curriculums out there that are not science-based. Matter of fact, several states are doing away with reading curriculums that are not science-based, so that would be one thing. The other thing is the use of technology. I think technology is great if it's a tool and it's an additive, but I also, you know, to me, teachers should be at the forefront of the learning experience for students, and I would, you know, one of the things that I would like to see is to just make sure technology is used as a tool and not as a first-line source for learning here, that we take advantage of the amazing teachers we have.
Thank you. Todd, what specific plans, projects, or programs would you recommend to support and improve the School of the Osage? Are there any that you might want to see limited or eliminated?
Well, the one thing that I would like to see more of, and we ventured into this, is individualized learning. And I experienced this as a student. I'm an engineer and a surveyor, and the way that I perform my work is typically on a project basis. So, by individualized learning, you can have the typical learning style of a teacher teaching in front of an entire classroom, or you could have what's called a project-based teaching in front of an entire classroom, or you could have what's called a, a project-based learning style, where essentially a student is given a project to perform. And that happened to me actually once or twice while I was here at School of the Osage and of course several times in college and in grad school. But, that, that learning style is something, the individualized learning style is something that I think we can do to, to help our students excel in, in everything that they do and find, and finding the right learning style. We, we've got the tools, like we mentioned, the facilities, the, the one-on-one technology. We have the tools to make the job easier. Now you need to push it and individualize the learning style for each student so they can excel.
Thank you very much. Allison, what specific plans, projects or programs would you recommend to support and improve the School of the Osage? Are there any that you might want to see limited or eliminated?
Todd kind of stole my idea. I would go to individualization a little bit more. I think we have an opportunity and we have a lot of availability of sources here that we can reach children at a level that they can, oh my goodness, now I'm searching for a word, that they can exemplify whatever, excuse me, amplify whatever skills that they have and they can just build on those from their source. At the same time, technology is definitely part of what is in our future and it's not going to go away. We need to use it. We do use it as a tool. We do not use it as the basis of how we educate our students and we need to continue to do that, but we need to make sure that it doesn't take over what we do from day to day. I think at this point, we're doing a good job, but we need to be careful that we don't overstep those bounds and that we need to keep continuing to use it as a support system.
Up next is Ethan. What specific plans, projects or programs would you recommend to support and improve the School of the Osage? Are there any you might want to see limited or eliminated?
So, I would like to focus more on the preparedness, most specifically in the high school, whether that be putting a program together for filling out scholarships, helping students fill out scholarships, whether it be for a science and technology-based pathway afterwards or nursing, whatever the path that student has chosen over their high school, you know, what they're going to do going forward. I think we should be able to help them excel. I know I had that opportunity when I was in high school to have assistants on writing scholarships and applying for grants. And I think on top of helping our students into a path that they feel is what they want to do after high school, we should be able to help them and, and move them forward so they can excel afterwards.
All right, back over to Carrie. What specific plans, projects or programs would you recommend to support and improve the School of the Osage? Are there any that you might want to see limited or eliminated?
We could expand on what's offered to our students on Mondays. We could offer more learning opportunities, job shadowing, career exploration internships. We could provide students, we want to continue to provide students with the latest technology. They'll need to stay competitive in a fast-paced world, especially post-graduation. We want to continue to provide more mental health awareness and support. That could be some training that could be performed on Mondays as well for teachers to empower them to identify student needs and equip them with, with some, some more tools to help students succeed.
And finally, Joyce. What specific plans, projects or programs would you recommend to support and improve the School of the Osage? Are there any that you might want to see limited or eliminated?
I don't know that, I hadn't really thought about what to add or what we, I would like to see something on Mondays. I feel like we're missing a lot of opportunity there, so I do bounce off of what Carrie said. I think that we, I, I can see that being a really good thing. I, I like bouncing off of what she said. She, she had some good ideas there. Maybe some just, you know, things that they could sign up for on Monday, something that they could use to build on, whether it be what they want to do when they get out of high school or something along that line. I think we've got the younger kids pretty well squared away on that. They've got a lot of options when it comes to what they're doing in school on Mondays if they're coming in. As far as eliminating some things or cutting back on some things, I think we do a lot of time doing assessments and repeating assessments and preparing for assessments. And maybe if we could take some of that time and put it back into just preparing them for the assessments and, and teaching, teaching instead of constantly just reassessing them to make sure where, where we're supposed to be. And a lot of those assessments, especially when it gets into the upper grades, high school grades, you know, they're, they're taking ACTs, they're getting ready for these other things as well. And, and not that assessments are bad, but maybe we don't need to spend as much time on assessments.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next question, and Mr. Miller will lead us off on this one. Todd, school safety is of course a top priority for everyone in the school and community. How will you provide and promote both a psychologically and physically safe environment for students and staff?
Well, I tell you, most of my career has been around safety and keeping the public safe in the highway industry. It's something that we deal with every day. People die every day on our highway system. So, safety is always an utmost concern of mine in everything that I do. At the school, really one of the big things is let's have resource officers that aren't just people that are standing there, walking around. We need resource officers that are engaged, engaged with the students. I've seen the success of a very engaged resource officer. They know all the kids. They know everything that's going on. They know the kids that really aren't, aren't tracking along very well. They know how to bring those kids in. So, really it's a tall order for our resource officers, but we really, we really have some wonderful resource officers now, but I really appreciate everything that they do and that's really something that, that's really going to help make this whole campus feel safer and, and that helps, they help out with everything, also the traffic throughout the, throughout the campus as well. So, really a strong resource officer, a strong, engaged, involved resource officer.
Thank you very much. Allison, school safety is of course a top priority for everyone in the school and community. How will you provide and promote both a psychologically and physically safe environment for students and staff?
Physically, all of our buildings have been upgraded with safety features. That's the entrance enhancements, the camera and safety alarm systems, our door security regulations and drills, in coordination with local emergency personnel and responders. Further, we're constantly going through training. We are going through upgrades. We're going through knowledge and competency exams to make sure that our students and our faculty are ready for any situation. That'll handle this physically. We're always keeping up on anything that needs to be done and frankly, just always upgrading. We've also got a ALIS training coming up that we're using in the next few months that we're coordinating with local enforcement to make sure that we're in, in good stuff with that. The, emotionally, the Always Heartbeat Initiative is one which focuses on positive reinforcement in our high school because a lot of that happens with kids. I mean, kids are going to be kids and sometimes they're just mean to one another and that causes a lot of depression and honestly PTSD that the kids are having to deal with all the time. So, we're trying for positive reinforcement and working with parents and parent education on that issue.
Ethan, school safety is of course a top priority for everyone in the school and community. How will you provide and promote both a psychologically and physically safe environment for students and staff?
So, I want to kind of piggyback on what Todd said. I think having a great resource officer, not only in one campus, but at least, at least on Bagdad Boulevard and the campuses here, I would like to take that a step further. I think trying to figure out, it probably won't happen immediately, but over, over a three-year period hopefully, to try and get resource officers that would be part of School of the Osage, not necessarily just with the agreements that we have with local enforcement. I think that will also help with response times should anything happen. The February board meeting, the ALIS training that was talked about, I think that's a fantastic idea. Anything we can do to help faculty and administration in the event something would happen is money ahead.
Carrie, school safety is of course a top priority for everyone in the school and community. How will you provide and promote both a psychologically and physically safe environment for students and staff?
We need to continue to help teachers understand and connect with their students through more professional development and training. Children need to feel safe and accepted within their classrooms. Teachers and staff need to be able to report problems without fear of retaliation. We must empower our teachers to support the well-being and best interests of our students. And through their example and reinforcement, students will have the opportunity to develop good character and make good decisions. We should continue to be a part and support Osage Family Partnership as well. They bring in programs, as was mentioned earlier, to support our kids and our families and community. So, that's a very important relationship to continue and for all of us to be a part of and support.
Thank you very much. Next up is Joyce. School safety is of course a top priority for everyone in the school and community. How will you provide and promote both a psychologically and physically safe environment for both students and staff?
I think one of the first places that I would, would look at is when we're not allowed, when the teachers are not allowed to discipline the students and then we have a classroom with disruptors and the teachers are spending their time trying to deal with disruptions, we need a little bit more support from administration when it comes to, to letting the teachers discipline and, and having a way that they can prevent that from happening. I think that's just going to set a culture, the, the students will be more comfortable in the classrooms, teachers will be more comfortable in the classrooms. Teachers shouldn't have a fear of what the student might do to them or fear of retaliation. I do, so discipline, as far as that realm goes, and it's safety, the kids would feel more safe if there was more control in the classrooms and the teachers need that support from administration. I also think that, you know, intruders coming into our buildings, we're going to have to sit out there and watch the buildings for a very long time to figure out when's going to be the best time to intrude. We're not going to have intruders. Our, our buildings are secure for the most part unless someone's just sitting out there camping and, and watching for patterns. So, I feel like we've got really secure campuses, but I just say as far as the psychological aspect, I think if we had a little bit better support for discipline, our teachers would be happier, our students would be happier.
And finally, Kelly. School safety is of course a top priority for everyone in the school and community. How will you provide and promote both a psychologically and physically safe environment for the students and staff?
So, with regards to the physical part, you know, I think that the school's doing all of the right things already. You know, we've, we've got great provisions in place in terms of making sure that the buildings stay secure and I, I think that, that we're on the right track. The, the resource officers is also great and I, I'm excited about the, the ALIS program too that they're going to be bringing. So, I think we're doing a number of really great things. With regards to emotional safety, you know, I'm going to, to, to mention something that, you know, I think it's also one of, we've not talked at all about technology and the impact that that can have on our kids. And with technology too, it's also important, we keep, we're keeping our children safe from predators, from inappropriate information that they may have access to, you know, when they're doing searches for, for books or materials for projects at school. So, I think all of those things need to be taken into consideration, you know, and we, we try to prioritize safety for students and teachers.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next question, we'll start with Allison on this one and finish up with Todd. Teachers across the country are leaving the profession through early retirement, career changes, or never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in our district who might be considering a different path?
I think we're actually pretty fortunate here. We've tried really hard to create an environment that our teachers want to be here and they want to stay here. Part of that is the four-day week, which has been extremely positive for them. It gives them an extra full day for collaboration within each of them, their departments and on their own planning for the week. They also get their planning time during the week. The other big step we've taken is that we made a pretty sizable increase in pay this week, or well, this last pay period. So, next year, they're going to be seeing a 5.9% increase overall and that'll bring them up into one of the higher-paid schools in the area, if not the highest, and one of the higher in the state, which will make a big difference. We've also increased our classified staff as well. So, all of that makes a difference. We also try to provide good emotional and physical support for our teachers and let them know that we're there and we talk to them as often as possible. So, we do whatever we can.
Thank you very much. Ethan, teachers across the country are leaving the profession through early retirement, career changes, or never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in our district who might be considering a different path?
I would say that School of the Osage is, is one of the top in the area. I would also say that there should be opportunity to help, help those teachers with any assistance that any of the students may, may need. I think that kind of rolls into some of the other questions that we've had, whether it be an additional paraprofessional that might help with reading or math. Kids sometimes don't learn at the same pace and, and I think having that resource there may help teachers either stay or come in. I also think, you know, having that support between administration and the teachers and showing how well, at least I believe, that Osage is connected between those levels is something to be said for how well Osage has been doing.
Carrie, teachers across the country are leaving the profession through early retirement, career changes, or never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in our district who might be considering a different path?
Well, the first thing I would say is that we appreciate you. You are very important to us and we need you. Teachers are our front lines. Our school district provides the curriculum or the, the what and when to teach. Our teachers are the how. We have to continue to support them, listen to them and continue to be there for them and provide them with what they need because in turn, they're going to support our students. And again, that's our most important point of why we're here. So, I just, I'm a big proponent of telling teachers how much we appreciate them and very much so for not only my three children, but all the students in our district. We're very lucky to have you.
Thank you, Carrie. Joyce, teachers across the country are leaving the profession through early retirement, career changes, or never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in our district who might be considering a different path?
I would say first of all, I think I, I would say first of all that we're going to really miss you if you don't reconsider. And then I think I would start asking them questions, you know, why are you leaving? What could be done differently? Is there something that, as a district, that we could change? We need to listen to our teachers. They, we wouldn't have school if it wasn't for our teachers and so we have to, we wouldn't be able to educate these kids without our teachers. We've got to find out why they're leaving the profession. We just need to ask the hard questions and figure out ways that we can support them and be there for them. They, they give not only of their own time, their own money, their, their own resources. I mean, they're giving so much of their time to our students and so much of themselves to our students. And I, I know for some of them, it's just so much harder than they thought it was going to be, but there's longtime teachers that are leaving the profession for lots and lots of reasons and we really just need to have those conversations with them and find out why they're leaving and then make whatever changes it is that we need to make, that we can make. I mean, not everything can be made, but for all those things we can, we need to be doing that.
Kelly, teachers across the country are leaving the profession through early retirement, career changes, or never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in our district who might be considering a different path?
I would ask them two questions. My first question would be why, so I would want to know why they're leaving. And then my, my next question would be what can we do to change your mind? So, I, I think that the, the why is really important with, if, if a teacher's not happy, generally it's, and if they're looking to leave the profession, oftentimes it's because they don't feel valued, they don't feel heard and they don't feel supported. So, as a board member, I think it is incredibly important that we take care of our teachers, that we listen to them. They are the front line. They are the ones that truly do, they spend the most time with our kids. They're the ones that know what works and what isn't working and I think that it's incredibly important that we listen to them, take that feedback and use it to navigate the course and, and make changes as needed so that teachers feel valued. And, and ultimately, I think if we do that, they're going to have the tools then in their toolbox to go back and make our kids more successful in the end, which is, which is our goal.
Todd, teachers across the country are leaving the profession through early retirement, career changes, or never even considering a career in education in the first place. What would you say to a current teacher in our district who might be considering a different path?
Well, our teachers, they're the jewel of, of School of the Osage and School of the Osage School District. We've used a lot of cliches, but I'm going to use a new one that's more highway sensitive, but it's, they're where the rubber meets the road. They're the ones that are teaching our, our students. And I tell you what, the main thing is we can provide them with the tools, or we can provide tools, facilities and pay, but the main thing is we need to inspire these teachers and... and pay, but the main thing is we need to inspire these teachers, inspire them, uh, they're already being driven by inspiration to take care of our kids, but provide more than just that, more than, uh, what they, what they have in their hearts. And Kelly did mention, yeah, make them feel appreciated, make them, uh, feel welcome and appreciated, and for what they do for our students and our kids and our children. Uh, so really, to me, and you'll hear this over and over again from me, inspiration, let's inspire them to, to wanna continue in this profession and stay at our school district.
Thank you very much. Our final question here, and so we'll start with Ethan. This one's pretty simple, or maybe it's very complicated. What is the most important role of a school board member?
My opinion of the school board member, the most important role would be to support the administration, the staff, the faculty, um, kinda rolls up into all the answers that we've given tonight. If all of those are clicking, uh, we are able to provide an education to, uh, these students of School of the Osage to where they can take that and move forward in their lives, hopefully to come back or excel elsewhere. But at the end of the day, I think we're all up here for the kids, and if we can support the teachers and faculty as a board and give them the tools they need to do that, we will be successful.
Carrie, what is the most important role of a school board member?
I think the most important role is supporting our students. Students' needs are our first and foremost. Being a part of the school, again, listening, assessing, um, gathering all the information before making decisions, being a good team member, being a, if you're part of the board, you need to work together, um, to, to, to be successful. Maintaining your staff, um, and continuing to provide them with the tools that they need to empower our kids, um, to be successful upon graduation.
Joyce, what is the most important role of a school board member?
Um, the community elects the school board, and I think, uh, we need to support our students and our parents, but we also need to be very supportive of the school. The, it's, it's, there's a, there's a lot more that goes into it, you know, than just, representing, you know, the little bits. I mean, it's, it's obviously, there's a lot more to that. Financial, making sure that their, the school stays financially sound, making sure that we have, uh, that the school, um, has got what it needs to be successful. And, uh, and so you, you're supporting your students, you're supporting your community by making sure that you, uh, the school can continue to be successful, that it can be successful, but making sure that those finances are there. Uh, the most important thing, I'm not sure that there is a most important thing, I think there's a lot of important things that the school board does.
Kelly, what is the most important role of a school board member?
To me, I think it's, it's important that we listen, we pay attention, um, we need to advocate, as a parent, we advocate for our kids, but I think as a school board member, we need to make sure that we're advocating for our teachers and staff, because if we have them set up where they are fully equipped and, and able to, um, do what they do best, um, the students are gonna reap the, the fruits of that, and, and we're gonna wind up, our district's gonna wind up thriving. So, um, to me, it's, that's really key. Financial, obviously, we need to make sure that we are financially responsible, um, we have a big budget, and we are spending, um, taxpayers' dollars, so I feel very, very committed to making sure too that we're, we're making good decisions, um, with regards to expenditures as well. But ultimately, um, you know, I feel like a, a school board member, really, their, their main role is to, um, be a, be a good advocate for, for the teachers so that they can advocate for our kids.
Mr. Miller, what is the most important role of a school, the role of a school board member?
Okay, well, uh, as a school board member, your, your main role is governance, we're not administrators. Uh, we handle things such as, uh, the, the budget, uh, we provide direction such as in our, our vision for the school and the future and moving forward. Uh, we play a role in, in, uh, uh, what, what our strategic plan looks like. Um, but you know, I'm gonna roll back to what I'd, I've said over and over again. We do all that, that's our job as a school board member, but one thing that isn't spelled out in your job is to inspire. And really, one thing that I feel like I've done in the last several years, I've inspired our administrator, I've inspired people to try to excel and to, to be the best you can be at the school district.
Allison, what is the most important role of a school board member?
Aside from learning to speak publicly through a microphone, 'cause I'm really bad at that. I think everybody has said basically the same thing, we need to support our school, but, uh, yes, the school board administrates, excuse me, doesn't administrate, we govern, and we hire the administrators that handle the school. We're the ones that hire the professionals, we're not professional educators. We're there to oversee, to make sure that everything is taken care of. We make sure that all of the rules are followed, we make sure that the kids are taken care of, we make sure that we're putting students out into the world that are gonna be able to run the country, run the community, stay in our community, and make sure that they stay and work the jobs that are in our area. We wanna make sure that they're good, normal, well-functioning human beings. We wanna give them a good moral compass, we wanna give them a good knowledge base, we wanna give them just a good base for the future in the world, and that's what we're here for. We're here for everything, and we're basically here to observe, and yes, inspire, and just oversee everything, and it's, it's everything.
Thank you. That concludes our question and answer portion of the evening, and we will now give each candidate an opportunity to make a closing statement of up to two minutes. This is your chance to talk directly to the voters. We will go in reverse order of the opening statements, and again, please be aware of the timekeeper. So, starting off, will be Mr. Todd Miller.
Thank you, Luke, and thanks for this opportunity to be able to speak to the public. I, I greatly appreciate it. Why should you vote for me? There's a lot of things that I represent. Uh, I am, uh, involved in this community. Again, I'm elder at, at my church, um, I'm, I have three children, that one was formerly in the district, and two are still in the district. Uh, obviously, I care for my children, I care for all the children in this district. Uh, I wanna make sure that, that, that this school district excels and is the greatest school district, uh, and, and that it is a destination, that we don't have to worry about, uh, uh, state legislature that, that, uh, gives options for kids to leave our schools. Uh, if we are the place to be, then that solves that problem right there. One thing I, I've, uh, I've seen a lot of great things, uh, come out of this district and come out of this community. Uh, I was a classmate of our, our one astronaut that graduated from here. Uh, so I've seen the, the pinnacle, I've seen that what we can do, uh, what can be done, and, and what kids can, can do with their lives after they leave this school district and, and do the most for themselves. Uh, I've also seen terrible tragedies, and, uh, I really wanna make sure that we can do everything we can to make sure that our kids do live a lifetime of success. Uh, that's what it's all about. Uh, you know, I talk about destination, this, that, and the other, it's about these kids getting out of here and really living the life to their fullest. That's what we want for our children, that's what I want for all these children, and that, that's why I ask that you, you vote for me on April 4th.
Thank you very much. Up next, Kelly Frisella, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. Um, so, as I kind of wrap things up here, I just wanted to say that, um, for me as a mom, when COVID hit, um, that's when I became acutely aware of how important educational decisions are and just how they impact children, um, and families. Um, and truly, that was one of the, that was really when I first started paying attention and starting getting, started to get more involved, started asking more questions. Um, and that was the, kind of a key motivator for me for why I decided that I wanted to run for school board. Um, I'm, again, I'm a very independent thinker, I'm a team player, um, I'm not afraid at all to advocate for what I believe and, and for what I know is right, um, especially if it's, if it's for the benefit of, of our children and for our teachers. So, you know, with that, um, I would just ask that for voters, um, please go out and vote. Um, I would, again, be honored if you'd vote for me, but it's really, really important, um, that, that everybody, um, go and take the time to vote in this election. So, um, thank you again for, for this evening, appreciate it, Luke. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Joyce Bush, you have two minutes.
Um, I really want to be a voice for the parents, I really wanna be a voice for the teachers, um, I wanna be a voice, uh, for the students. I, I want to see School of the Osage continue to, um, put out great adults, you know, prepare these great adults for their futures. And, um, I, I've got ideas on, on things that I think might make, make a big difference there, um, but I want the opportunity to, to come together and visit on those subjects, pick the brains of those that have a lot more experience than I do. But, um, I care about this district, I care about these students, I care about our teachers and our staff, and, um, I care about this community. I've been in the, involved in the community for, like I said, about 25 years. Um, I have, uh, my roots are here, my children are here, um, my grandchildren are here, and I just, um, really want the opportunity to, 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 uh, serve you guys and to serve the community in this aspect. Attending the board meetings for the last year and a half or so, I, I've learned a lot, and I, uh, I believe that I, I've learned a lot about what goes into this job, and, um, and I also have talked a lot in the community, and I feel like I have, uh, a pretty good pulse on what parents want and, um, what a lot of our educators want, and, uh, administration as well. Um, I think we have a fantastic school district, and I just really wanna see our district, um, improve and continue to, uh, to go forward in that direction. Thank you.
Up next, Ethan Chackleford, you have two minutes.
Thank you again, Luke, for the, for the night, uh, for us to address the public. Um, I, I would like to say I would be honored as well, uh, if you, uh, would elect me to the school board. Uh, I feel I can bring a lot of values to the school board. Uh, I'm a professional problem solver, I like solving problems, and sometimes, um, making things more efficient, um, is also a problem-solving, um, aspect to it. Uh, I think, um, being here for not only my kids, but the kids of the district, and being able to see them grow and excel and learn, uh, in a school that is, is top in the state, um, is just very exciting for me, and again, I would appreciate your vote on April 4th.
Up next, Carrie Anderson, two minutes for a closing statement.
First and foremost, I'm a concerned parent who cares deeply about Osage, and I've given many hours of my time to this district. As a school board member, I will always put students' needs first. I'll ensure School of the Osage continues to be one of the best school districts in our area through supporting our teachers and staff, who will in turn provide our students with the necessary tools to be successful in an ever-changing and challenging world. I am positive and optimistic about the future and how I can effectively contribute to our school district's continued success. Again, thank you for this opportunity, Luke, and please go and vote on April 4th. Thank you so much.
And finally, Allison Schneider.
From the time I was elected on my first term in 2000, I've had nothing but the desire to make this school the very best it can be. Um, I retired twice, and I've come back twice when I've been asked, because I love this school, and I feel that I still have some wisdom and some insight to offer. I have no personal agenda, I pride myself in being able to put aside any personal feelings and any personal bias and make a decision that is best for our students, because that's what it comes down to. It's what is best for the school, students of School of the Osage. Osage is already a great school, that did not happen by accident. It happened because you've had a strong school board, and you've had a strong school board during the time that I've been on this board, and I'd like to continue to do that job. It takes a lot of opportunity, it takes a lot of commitment, and it takes a lot of the support of this community, and I know this community. I love it deeply, I've been here my entire life. I, I have a long, excuse me, I have a long track record, and my commitment to making sure we hire only the excellent in our faculty, staff, and administrators, and that we're dedicated to making certain that Osage students are prepared to take on the future, and again, to become leaders of this community and this country. And I think we're going to do that, and I have faith that we will.
Thank you very much. This concludes our 2023 School of the Osage School Board Meet the Candidates Forum. Thank you to Lake TV and the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce for all their efforts producing the forums in this election cycle. This valuable service to the voters of our communities would not have happened without the selfless efforts of so many folks. Also, thank you to the candidates for your willingness, not only to join us this evening and let the voters hear directly from you, but for your willingness to put your name on the line in an effort to serve your fellow citizens. Thank you to all who tuned in tonight, and make sure you have your voice heard at the polls on April 4th. Godspeed, everyone. Good night.